Good afternoon. On behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Education, I'll call to order the special call meeting. Today is Tuesday, June the 17th. Special welcome to those here with us in attendance. Commissioner Carter, we thank you for being with us, and as always, our friends from the media. Before we begin, I would like to send our condolences to the Ward family. We did lose a longtime ABSS educator yesterday. She was a graduate of Western High and returned to teach for almost 20 years. So it's a sad day for our Western Alamance community and our ABSS family. So certainly thinking and praying for Kurt Ward and his family as they move forward. At this time, there is a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we need a motion?
I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Do we need to amend the agenda?
I believe that Dr. Fleming would like to amend the agenda.
Yes, I would like to recommend we add a closed session after our budget discussion.
My understanding is if we amend the agenda right now, it's a slightly different situation than if we do it later. So I would propose to accept the agenda as amended by Dr. Fleming.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Yes, oh, excuse me. Let me interrupt. I failed to recognize our attorney today. Rod Malone is joining us from Therrington Smith in Mr. Mitchell's absence. So I do want to thank Mr. Malone for being here with us.
Thank you.
And are you ready to move forward?
My recommendation would be to add the closed session, but then to add a budget discussion item after open session, or excuse me, after closed session as well. So we will have a budget discussion, we will go into closed session, we will come out of closed session, and have another budget discussion post closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Dr. Parker, is that agreeable as amended?
Yes, just as amended.
So your motion is okay amended in that fashion. And Ms. Harvey, your second still stands. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. Hall is joining us virtually. He is traveling today. Dr. Hall, are you in agreement with amending the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. So a motion passes six oh. Thank you. Thank you all. At this point, before we open the floor for budget update, Commissioner Carter is with us, and I'd love to invite him to the podium, to share with us what the commissioner, the action that they took last night. He wants to offer some clarification. Before you begin, we certainly thank you and Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Thompson for your leadership last night.
Well, I had to really struggle last night with what we had to do because it took me a while to realize what had happened with the move in the original budget proposal made by our manager. But it didn't take very long for me to figure out that they were defunding the schools by $10 million, and that just wasn't going to fly as far as I was concerned. I don't think it was going to fly as far as other of our commissioners, obviously as well. I don't know why that's what they wanted to say. Honestly, it doesn't make any sense. No logic to it at all. But what we have done is put back in your operating budget the $10 million that was moved to capital. Then we have taken out of our fund balance $10 million, moved $8 million of that into capital for y'all. And then we've taken and raised the property taxes two and a half cents, which after it does the things we needed to finally fix in the county budget, provides a million, a little over a million three in additional funding for your operations. So you should have 11, three and some change in operations once the dust settles. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Questions or comments for our commissioner? Mr. Engel?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and Commissioner Allen and also Thompson. That was government and how it works, you know, before the general public and how it works efficiently. And I just want to thank you for what you did. I know it was tough. I've been in your shoes for six years, and you had some tough decisions. But I just, from my heart, I thank you for what y'all did last night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Yep, I just wanted to, similar to Mr. Dan, is to thank you for what y'all did last night. I know it is never an easy task to go into raising property taxes and everything, but I do appreciate also your call of people of the community, Commissioner Carter, to email and come out to your meetings, to voice their opinion around the budget, and to be heard around that piece. And also just a thank you to Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Allen for their work with it also, and voting along with you for, I think it was that amended Plan C, or modified Plan C that y'all did. So thank you for that too. And then just lastly, just out to the pouring out of community members who came out to y'all's public hearing and spoke, and those who came out last night, others who probably emailed, others who've been emailing us about this. Just thank you for your continued support for our public school system and for ABSS every day. Thank you.
Well, as many of you know, my wife taught for 27 years. We've always supported public education. I will continue to support public education. I couldn't imagine what y'all would be going through trying to figure out how to budget with $10 million less than you had last year. I mean, I couldn't even.
We couldn't either, so thank you.
I have been accused of a lot of things in the last 24 hours. You know, it's, it's, I led the tea party here for 13 years, and a lot of people, taxed enough already is what T stands for. T E A, taxed enough already. I've been in opposition to raising taxes, primarily raising taxes when they aren't needed, when they aren't accomplishing anything or if the money's being wasted. We have been through our budget in the county with a fine-toothed comb. We've gone to zero-based budgeting, which I believe y'all have as well. We've cut everything that doesn't have to be done. A lot of proposals were being made by our department heads for things they'd like to see done, which they think could improve service. At this point in time, with what we were facing and what y'all needed, we couldn't give them everything they wanted. And at the same time, we try, I personally, and I think all five of our commissioners, try to balance what we do from a property tax perspective to the citizens. Because there's an element of our community that is going to potentially suffer every time we go up on property taxes. The impact of last night's increase is a little over $5 a month on a median-priced home in Alamance County. Median-priced homes, about $265,000 today. That's another crazy issue right there. But I know there are people that will hurt. $5 to some people can make a difference in buying medication this month, or buying the right combination of groceries. So that touches our heart, everybody on our board, and I'm sure it does y'all as well. So it's tough to have to look at things and know what we've got to do. We operate in the county in the same place that y'all live and everybody else in the county lives. Everything we touch has gone up. Your cost of personnel has gone up, our cost of personnel has gone up. Equipment, everything has gone up. So we all know what we're facing. We've got to try and figure out how to live with that. One of the things I asked last year, we did a tax increase last year of 3.66 cents. That was one point 66 cents higher than two members of our board at that time wanted to go, and I was one of the people that voted for that. At that time, I asked for a regular joint meeting to be held so that we could be, as commissioners, could be as aware of what y'all are dealing with, and maybe y'all could be as aware of what we're dealing with so that we could work better together. I would like to see us come out of this event with some sort of interaction in a similar fashion. So I'll leave it up to Sandy and Dr. Fleming, and John, and Heidi. And I'm going to push it a little bit harder this year than I did last year, and try and be involved in it more. I was supposed to be involved in it then. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Sandy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carter. We do have more questions and comments from some of the other board members, but thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay. Mr. Engel, then Dr. Parker, and then Ms. Harvey.
Just one more thing. I was kind of upset last night with the ending, and the fact that there were, and I know you're a grown man, and Ms. Allen, you know, and Ms. Thompson are grown women, and they can handle themselves. But, you know, for somebody to attack you and say, well, you know, you won't be elected again. There was a man that was a governor of California many years ago.
[laughing]
And he was called Tax and Spend. And later on, he became the President of the United States. His name, Ronald Reagan.
That's right.
So I did the same thing you did back in 2015. I had 39 calls, probably like you've been getting the last 24 hours. People were upset because we raised taxes five cents. But in the end, when I ran for school board six years later, I won. So you just keep doing what you're doing. You're good.
Well, my goal is always to do the right thing, as I feel led. And I try to listen to all sides, and try to make a professional, right decision for the people of our county. I love Alamance County. We've been here 20, almost 20, going on 24 years now. And it's our family, and we love this place. So we appreciate you and what y'all are doing as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Engel, Dr. Parker, and then we'll finish up with Ms. Harvey.
Yeah, so I'll be relatively short. Thanks for coming here and talking to us, and especially there's maybe some overlap between the Board of Education and commissioners, so this will get out to a slightly different audience. And something like a joint meeting sounds really great. I know this has been a very difficult budget cycle for the, you know, for the county. In a lot of ways, everything is more expensive, and we very much appreciate your support. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm definitely going to piggyback off of what everyone else has said. But for me, I just truly want to say thank you. I spent a lot of hours not sleeping, worried about the budget, thinking about all of the students, the teachers, the staff that it would affect. It's not easy making decisions. It's not easy sitting in the seats that we sit in. But it's okay to do the right thing sometimes, even when it's hard. We have to do the right things. We have to do the right things because we have so many people looking at us. We have so many people looking up to us, and we don't even know that they're looking up to us, but they are. I want to say thank you to Commissioner Allen, to Commissioner Thompson. It definitely took a lot to do what you done last night, and from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And on their behalf, I'll say thanks as well, and I'll convey your sentiments to them.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Dr. Fleming, did you want to add anything before Mr. Carter wraps up?
Well, I appreciate Vice Chair Carter for being here and for his vote. And we spoke about Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Thompson as well. I certainly appreciate their courage to stand up and to vote in the right direction, and I think that will pay off in the end. So we appreciate that. I really want to thank too our county manager, Heidi York, her finance staff, budget staff. She's a pleasure to work with. You know, she's in a similar position of me. We both work for boards. And so that brings a lot of great things, and it brings opportunities too. So I can understand the position she's in. And then also to our ABSS community, our staff, students, our parents, community members at large, our business and industry community came out for us. Our Alamance Chamber came out for us. I'm just so appreciative of them. That's probably the, if there's, the biggest positive is to show that there is support for our public schools in Alamance County. And you can almost get emotional about it, because I've received so many emails over this, and then you see who showed up yesterday as well. So, and during the work sessions and the public hearing as well. So I will keep it short and just thank everyone. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I think Commissioner Carter did a very good job explaining the actions of last night. I do encourage folks to go back and watch. If you went to bed at the normal time, you may have missed a lot of it.
[laughing]
I will tell you that I did make a Dunkin' coffee stop a couple times already today. But I, again, thank you, and happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Messer is as well if we have any questions.
You made a reference there, and I will say, we have been extremely fortunate Alamance County to acquire some very high-quality talent to lead our county. Our county manager, our county attorney, our county clerk, our county, our new tax assessor, tax administrator. He was highly recommended to me by several sources before we even contacted him, before we even knew who he was, and we were able to acquire him. I mean, he's, and he is actually going to develop some additional roots in Alamance County. His daughter, I believe, is teaching in Alamance County. So she's engaged, and I believe she's looking, he said that there was a possibility they might decide to live here. They live in Guilford County right now. But we have some really good talent. We've gotten a lot of things brought up, brought to the forefront so that we can work on them for our citizens. So we have a lot of good things in our future. Just got to point it in the right direction.
Before you step away, I failed to ask Dr. Hall who's joining us on the phone. Dr. Hall, do you have any questions or comments for Commissioner Carter?
I think I will just echo what was said there. I did watch the majority of the board meeting until the end last night. I was a little late joining from, coming from dinner. But I also appreciate that you were proactive in allowing the rest of the But I also appreciate that you were proactive in allowing the rest of the, the comments from the community to be, be had also and not cut off. I think that shows your willingness to hear the public, and we are very excited by the outcome. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. And just to, to remind the community, Mr. Wagner is on vacation this week. He did drive back last night for the meeting, and he did drive down, I think, this morning to rejoin his family. But I know he was appreciative as well.
Thank you.
For what happened last night, so we'll share that on his behalf. Board members, anything else? Dr. Fleming, anything else for Vice Chair Carter? We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. I have another meeting. I would love to stay and, and listen to some of the deliberations. I've gotta be someplace else at 2 o'clock, so.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, board, I will turn the floor over to superintendent, to our superintendent for a conversation about last night's budget.
Well, thank you very much, and again, I appreciate the support. Glad we had a commissioner come and visit us, and appreciate the community support again. Just so you know, I want to, I don't wanna rehash anything, so I won't get into all the details of last night's meeting. I will make a point that if you go back and watch, you will see that I had multiple opportunities to go to the podium to speak. I think the same three commissioners we have been mentioning are those that have asked me to come up there and, and either clarify or ask a question or give some points, and I appreciate that opportunity. Just to give a quick recap, if you go back to the county manager's recommended budget, originally, we received all of our PEGO funding, about $4.3 million. That's what I kinda call day-to-day capital. Drop ceiling, falls down, a light ballast goes out, hot water heater goes out, those types of things you don't really expect. Or just some major updates and repairs here and there. Then we have the capital improvement plan, which we have, is new now. Capital improvement plan would be those things we know we can plan out, AC units, roofs, paving, painting, things that you know have certain lifespans. In the county manager's recommended budget, she moved 10 million from our current expense fund to our capital improvement plan, which we originally asked for 14 million. She moved 10 million to that, leaving us with a $10 million gap in current expense, plus she moved 1.3 million from current expense to the sheriff's budget to pay for the county SROs, not the city cops, but the county SROs in our schools. That was based on the belief that the bookkeeping would be easier, since typically we receive those funds and fund to from the county, and then we pay that back to the county so that the sheriffs can be paid via payroll. While I would agree that's probably easier bookkeeping-wise, by keeping it out of our books and running through our finance system, that will not be captured by DPI as a part of our per pupil expenditure, and our low-well formula is very reliant on few factors, but one being the per pupil expenditure. Last night, through that discussion, through the leadership of, of Mr. Carter, he proposed the 2.5 cent property tax increase, which would give us the 1.3 back without the sheriff deputies being in it. They would continue to pay them. So that's really a 1.3, I guess, reduction to expense, knowing that that's money now we can use somewhere else. And as a part of that, they reduced our capital from 10 million down to 8 million. So now there's really a gap between the 8 million and the 14 in capital. Mostly, well, actually about all, I think, would be roofs and HVAC, maybe some technology as well. And we can get that clarified more here in just a second. And that's really where we ended, 2.0 cent property tax in Alaman's County increase. A, what I will say, level funded, when you add your 10 and your 1.3 back, and then an $8 million reduction in our capital improvement plan, which would reduce roofs and HVAC that are up for replacement, which is nearly all of them. You know, that, that's where we got, we were able, or Vice Chair Carter was able to get three votes for that, and that's how the evening ended. There was a little more in there, but I'll, again, let you go back. I did feel to mention, one thing I did mention, I started to, and then we got into the budget. There was a resolution proposed that would ask the legislature to no longer allow counties to pay for local supplements, and a part of that would require school districts to forward, really sweep, I guess you could say, all of their fund balance at the end of every year, revert it back to the county, similar to the way we have to revert money back to the state. And I, I don't know if our attorney has heard all this, so if he's laughing back there, I apologize. That failed quickly and solidly, and then we eventually got into the budget conversation. There were some conversations around the supplement. I believe they had incorrect information. We are lower than Durham and Guilford. I believe those were the two examples given. There was a belief that they, that we were higher than those two counties. We are not. There was also a belief that our schools were not overcrowded. I know one example, Garrett Elementary School, they were reporting with 70% capacity. We know it's over 100, 'cause we're using some hallfield seats. Garrett's actually at 108% capacity. And so there's just some misinformation floating around, and I don't really know where that started. I, I know we have the correct documents and the official documents. So I have talked enough. I'll try not to replay everything from last night, but I am happy to answer any questions. Mr. Messer, Mr. Hook can give you any detail on projects, if you need that.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Before we start, I'm told that Mr. Wagner has joined us on the phone as well. Okay, he dropped the call. So we'll come back if Mr. Wagner comes back to us. Questions or comments for Dr. Fleming or in regards to anything last night? Yes, or Mr. Rogers?
Well, first off, just thank you, Dr. Fleming, Mr. Messer, Mr. Hook, all of our cabinet staff on your work around our budget, and then also being available for questions that was being asked at the commissioners' meetings, and then possibly questions that were being asked from us also, going along the way, just because of different things that were coming up. And I'm glad that you addressed the misinformation, I'll say misinformation, that was said last night, because I felt like, just because some people sit in certain seats and have titles, you cannot put out false information to people. You have to, you need to put out truthful information. I can't just sit in this seat and tell you that the sky is purple and think that you're supposed to believe that, because that's not true, especially in this age of misinformation. We need to put out truthful things. But just a couple of questions. One, around the capital improvement money. I know our request was 14.7, and we're receiving eight. So what possible impact might that have on planned projects that we were looking at for the next school year?
So I think three areas. On technology, already, Mr. Messer and I've had some conversations on where we can do some laptop refreshes and all that outside of capital, so we might be okay there. But the big piece, it's simply two things, roofs and HVAC systems. And so I already had asked Mr. Hook this morning, and I might invite him to the microphone up there, if there are projects that, you know, typically, if you're pulling a, if we have to, if we're doing a roof, you, you know, and the rooftop units are bad, you're gonna replace those rooftop units. Well, there's not enough to do that. So the question is, do you replace some HVAC and some roofs, which are independent from each other? It sounds like most of our projects are. So now we're gonna have to go through and figure out, you know, do we not replace some chillers that are 30 years old? Do we not replace some roofs that are already leaking? I think the roofs probably, in many ways, take precedent, because it keeps the weather out, but without a conditioning system, you might go back to days prior to my arrival. And so I say all of that is, we're gonna have to prioritize. And again, he can, Mr. Hook can give you an example. I just can't think of exact projects. He can. I know we have two, Hall River and Sylvan, that have extremely outdated chillers, and so our cooling tower is one or the other. So I'll let him share that.
Okay. So we had originally requested in the CIP, 14,702,718 dollars, and that was allocated across roofs, HVAC, technology, school safety, security cameras, and keyless door access. And what, what we're gonna get now is eight, 8 million from last night's meeting, but they have a separate stream of capital that funds technology, and that's not part of the 8 million. So in Mrs. York's budget book that they presented, you can go in that, and I don't have the exact figure. Originally, we requested 2,550,000 for technology. They reduced that down to some number, I wanna say it's around 1.4. We'll have to go into the county budget book that Ms. York had emailed us before they presented it to find that. But I did verify with their finance director, Susan Evans, a couple of weeks ago, that that is indeed a, a separate string. And if some of you all recall the discussion in last year's budget cycle between then Commissioner Turner and Susan Evans, they specifically said there was a separate stream of capital funding that would fund into technology. So that's separate from, from the 8 million. I don't have that number right off, right off the top of my head. So back to what, what can be funded in the, in the 8 million. Our budget numbers that we had, we were looking for Southern Middle Roof Replacement this year at 2.8 million, and Sylvan Roof Replacement at 3.2 million. At this point, those would be off the table, and those both have frequent water leaks, and we have to put frequent patches on those. So those need, really need to be done now. And then we also, we're looking for 4.1 million to complete all of the Graham High HVAC, and that's the, the proposal I brought to you at the last meeting to go ahead and approve that for design build, and so we could put that out there for RFQ, which we've done in hopes that the funding would be there for that. And then the two chillers that Dr. Fleming mentioned, Hall River Elementary and Sylvan Elementary have the same chiller, and they're going on 33 years old. And my budget number to replace each of those is $320,000 each, so that's $640,000. So with the eight, I would go for the HVAC, because that's something that we could move on with right now. We could go ahead and put the roofs in design. It's Southern Alaman's Middle and Sylvan Elementary, but then we'd have to reflect on where the funding would come from to, to do the work, but we could go ahead and get the design work going with our roofing engineer, REI engineers. So we could do, do the HVAC now with the eight. We'd be unable to do the two roofs.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Mr. Rogers?
And so I know too you had touched the original requests around the safety, yeah, the school safety piece, security cameras, and the doors, so that would possibly have to be a thing that would, that couldn't, couldn't happen at this time, or might would have to be reevaluated?
Well, what, what we had done is we had requested across the next three years, funding in the CIP, they record, the county requested that we put safety into the CIP rather than into the Capital Light PEGO Plan. So the way we were gonna go about that is we were requesting 1, 1,750,000 this year to tackle half of the remaining camera and key card projects, and then 1, 1,750,000 in the next year to tackle the remainder of the camera and key card projects. To, I mean, honestly, that was to relieve the, the burden on the county to split it into two, rather than ask for it all at one time. And in the third year of the CIP, we were requesting 2 million to, to, to build, install the remainder vestibules, the schools that don't have vestibules, which I think is roughly 13 schools. So we tried to spread that load across, just like we're trying to spread HVAC renovations and roof, roof replacements, just to be practical.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hook. That's all I have for Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Any other questions for Mr. Hook? Any other questions for Dr. Fleming in regards to capital? All right. Any question, thank you, Mr. Hook. Any questions for operating expenses? Yes, Mr. Engel, or, I'm sorry, I was gonna call you doctor. Mr. Engel. And before you start, I'm also told that Mr. Wagner is back on the line with us. Avery, are you with us?
I am. Thank you so much. I apologize, my disturbance for, I apologize for that one.
No worries. We're sorry to intrude in your vacation again this week. Mr. Engel?
It's all good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This may be getting ahead of the game, if, if it is, I apologize. But how about the supplement, where we stand on that, and also some of those positions that we were trying to get back in that have been counted?
That's right. So we, as you mentioned, we do kinda have a, what I would say, a 1.3 million dollar reduction in expense by taking out those deputies at this point. So that could be applied to unfreezing. Mr. Messer and I've had some conversations, unfreezing the supplement, getting folks caught back up. But what you have to remember is, you know, while that certainly is a priority, and our staff would like that to be a priority, it does nothing for our classified folks. It does nothing for paying the utilities. We do have to pay our power bill, water bill, gas bill. It does nothing on the employer-paid expenses. I do believe state health plan will be going up, and so any locally paid staff members, we have to pay that employer-paid expense, retirement as well. And so there are some overhead fee expenses with, dealing with that. Also, you have to remember, we added no, when Southeast Alaman's opened, there was no operating cost transferred to them. So we're still paying for a bookkeeper, for the custodial staff there, square footage increase that we didn't receive local funding for. And so all of that has to be paid as well, and so we're gonna have to have some tough discussions and, and conversations on how we move forward. I definitely would like somehow, for a little bit of the savings, if, if this is where we end things, to make, to make sure our employees benefit somehow.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. One thing that I will ask, when you're looking at our budget book, and I think it's on page eight, and you're looking at that expansion, expansion request, so we're, so basically what we're talking about is we've received 1.3 million, and now as a board and as an administration, we figure out how to stretch that 1.3 over the requested 5.7 million. And a 520,000 piece of that is the charter schools. And we have, we certainly support our charter schools. It's a different educational model, and I think it's there for a purpose. But I don't think that the county understands that charter school allocation. There was a lot of conversation in last night's meeting, and I think it would be helpful for the community and our county leaders to understand why this 520,000 is being requested for the, to be reimbursed from that charter school transfer.
I'm gonna let, Mr. Messer does a very good job explaining that and how that money follows the students, so we will, we will let him answer that.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendent. So let's do a little history here of ABSS. In the past, whenever an expansion budget was brought forward, it was never brought forward with charter schools in mind. Say, for example, if you needed a million dollars to actually fund a supplement for the school district, well, you never really got a million dollars for ABSS. You had to take the charter school portion out and send that to the charter schools. So, and, and this is just another way of being transparent. So, I mean, we could fluff the number of the supplement and ask for 2.1 million dollars for the supplement, and now actually, we're only gonna pay about 1.8 or whatever, 1.9, and then we would just send the rest of that to the charter schools. But for us to fully get what we need and what we ask for, we have to break that charter school payment out. That way, we know how much that we're gonna act, the, the community knows how much we're actually gonna pay the supplement. That's just an example. Any expansion item we ask for, we need to break that out. Any expansion item we ask for, we need to break that out, because if we don't break that out, then we never truly get funded for anything that we ask for, because the charter schools get their portion of it. Did I, are you understanding? Did I answer your question?
And just, the board knows, we're roughly at ten percent charter.
Yep.
So twenty-three, twenty-five hundred kids going to a charter school. If we need a million dollars, ten percent of that will follow the student. So if you need a million, you're only going to get nine hundred.
That's right. So we're scrambling, the district has always scrambled in the past to find funding to complete what the actual need is for the district.
And so what we're doing, and I like the way we did it, is the fact we said, okay, we need a million dollars plus ten percent to go to charter. So that's why we, we put out in here the charters. What we could have done is just said, we need a hun, we need one million, one hundred thousand. And gone that route, knowing we only needed a million, but I think the more transparent route was showing what will follow the student. Unfortunately, last night, we were beat over the head on that.
I mean, but it's just a more transparent way of showing where the actual dollars follow the student, when you break it out like that.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Yes, Mr. Engel?
And this is one I wanted to stand up and talk last night, but of course, it wasn't our turn. So on these charter schools, these kids, if they live in Alamance County, they may be going to a charter school sixty, seventy miles away. Where does the money go?
It follows the student, wherever they attend.
Follows the student.
Mr. Rogers?
And just also, to just talk about that charter school piece, since it, since it came up so much in discussion last night, that is, that request and everything, we have to do that by state. The state requires us to have to send money over to the charter schools, correct?
That's right.
So it's not a thing that's just decided by ABSS or anything at all.
It's legislative driven.
Yeah. And, and I mean, I think us up here on the board would, would love for the fact that, and this is nothing against the charter schools, that they would have to put their own requests out there to the county, instead of us having to add it into ours. But like you said, that's legislatively led, so we required to do that. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Any, anything else? I just want to follow up on the supplements, because there was a lot of conversation about this at one of their retreat, one of the commissioner retreat budget work sessions that they had last week, as well as last night's meeting. We currently rank thirty-four out of one hundred and fifteen school districts. In 2021, we ranked ten. In 2024, we ranked twenty. We now rank number thirty-four in teacher supplements. Just to give you guys a taste of that, we currently, our average supplement is six thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. The state average is seven thousand twenty-eight. So we, we are below, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars below the state average, I believe. Wake County pays eleven thousand. Chapel Hill Carville pays eleven thousand. Durham's over ten. Chatham's over nine. Orange County's over eight, and Guilford's over seventy-five hundred. Those are the top districts that we compete with for talent, when we're recruiting educators and when we're trying to retain educators. So that is a huge piece. We also have, how many classified employees? We don't have a classified supplement. We are the second largest employer in this county, and we have to be able to pay competitive wages in order to retain and recruit. We have a lot of vacancies. So I think that's one reason for us that the expansion budget was so important, is we held that supplement harmless last year, and now we've got one point three to spread across five point seven. And when you take in that employment retirement increase that you talked about, or state health plan, and then you look at the operating expenses that we, you know, we have to pay, that eats up the biggest chunk of that one point three. So certainly appreciate the leadership of the commissioners that voted in our favor last night. Again, it's not where we want to be, it's better than where we were, but we still have a lot of work before us. So I think that was the purpose of today's meeting, is to have a collective conversation. Yes, Mr. Wagner, Dr. Hall?
I'm sorry, it's Mr. Wagner, real quick. I do apologize for.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
But the, the one thing we have to do is invest in our future, remember the past, learn from the past, but forget it. We've had some issues in the past. There's no question, we've had supportive education, it's Alamance County Commissioners, but learn from it and grow further, invest into your community, the community that matters. Folks, we have a great opportunity here to be so great, not average. And I appreciate our county commissioners, I do. These folks work their tails off to reduce taxes. But my job, and your job, is work our tails off, make the ABSS the best dag gum school system we can in the state of North Carolina. And that's what I'm going to do. And we have to work together, not apart from one another, and quit complaining, quit having these arguments that we always have. We all have a vision to be successful. We do. You got, like I said earlier, if you continue to live in the past, you'll live in the past, and you'll do nothing better. So I, what I'll ask is for our county commissioners and our support groups and this ABSS Board of Education, is just say, guys, look, we've made mistakes. We have. Learn from them, be better, and move forward for our community together. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anything else from the board at this point on the budget? Anything else from you, Dr. Fleming?
No. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share a little update.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Messer. At this time, I believe that our vice chair has a motion for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, I make the motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point one, one, no, excuse me, point eleven A three, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Engels. There, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Do I have two on the phone, Mr. Fire, or one?
Yeah, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, could I dial to that meeting now? Is that okay, if I do that?
You will, you will hang on the line. You'll just stay on the line, Mr. Wagner. Dr. Hall, was that an affirmative from you?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that we are a seven oh vote on that. It's unanimous. At this time, we will move into closed session, and Mr. Hall, Dr. Hall and Mr. Wagner will join us virtually as well.
Thank you.
At this time, I believe there is a motion before the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board, I make the motion to approve the resolution initiating the statutory budget dispute process between the Alamance Borough and Board of Education and the Alamance County Board of Commissioners.
Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously seven oh. Is there any other business before the board this afternoon?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?